The regular meeting of the CUSD 201 Board of Education for September 23, 2025. Roll call.
Leah Canover.
Here.
Carlos Avia.
Here.
Adina Hoover.
Here.
Kevin Maron.
Here.
Alexandria Mill.
Here.
Jessica Redonia.
Here.
Lauren Sekiri.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss specific employees, student discipline, and purchase or lease of real property for the use of a... For the use of the public body? For use by the public body? Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Maron.
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Canover.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At 7:22, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, a public comment, do we have any public comment? Great, moving right along, we are gonna start the budget hearing, the public hearing for the proposed 2025-26 budget at 7:22, and take it away, Ron.
Okay, I was seeing if it was projecting, there it goes, thank you so much, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, just a quick recap for what we were discussing, the last, last board meetings with our timelines and our revenues recaps, you've already heard this before, but the FY '25 revenue recap, what we're looking at compared to now, and I could just kind of go into what we're doing about, this year we're looking at, again, a drop in the corporate personal property replacement taxes, that's a 41.3% drop, we're also looking at mandated categorical funding that the state would typically give to us, which is for mandated pieces such as transportation, special education, food service, there are other pieces, it's an 8% decrease, the CPI, 2.9%, so we're expecting that much to be happening during taxes, as well as that we're here for district and as their funding being gone, so if you see our revenue breakdown, we are very unique in terms of, we're 89.9% locally funded, and then if you look at our state and federal funding, and there is anticipation of federal being even less in the next year or two, depending on what is being decided, state is at 7.3%, local revenue breakdown, again, this is, it's on par with the rest of the communities around the area, we have 69.9% of it being residential, whereas 26.7% of it, our revenues come from the commercial groups, and then we have industrial being 3.3, and if I'm going too fast, let me know, I just, I know we've seen this before, I just kind of wanted to go through it, of course, our personnel variables, we have WESPA contract at 4%, our custodial contract is four and a half, our insurance is at 6%, and we also have certified, which varies based on the staff member, but that, again, it's one of those typical pieces that every district will deal with, as for transportation, we've seen a 4% increase in SACID, which is our special ed, in district, we've been using Westway, that was a 6%, our services and supplies, we anticipate a 2.9%, which is the CPI that we were banking on, and of course, there's been the taxi costs and parent daily rate that's been kind of taken care of when it comes to having parents being reimbursed, other variables, of course, electrical, gas, our HVAC, our sewer and water, to be fair, you know, for example, I just put a new roof on my house last year, so when it comes to any sort of heating, ventilation, air conditioning, it also works like that at schools, right, so it's about our upkeep and making sure that our facilities are top notch, our object expenses, 56% of it is salaries, and then 22% of it is benefits, and that, again, that's pretty much on par with the rest of other districts, our purchase services are about 7.7%, supplies is 3.6, at capital outlays is a four tenths of a percentage, that's kind of tough to deal with, I know that Joe Smith would love for that to be a little higher, and then other expenses is 10.6, that all kind of varies depending on what we're looking at, so as we talked about it before with our operating funds, our ed fund, we will be, we're looking at a little bit of a deficit there of $501,979, but our O&amp;M, it's about $243,170 of an increase, transportation is actually holding pretty steady for the district, so we're kind of looking almost balanced completely, so that's where you get your total for your operating funds, now, for everybody to understand this, operating funds are specifically for what it would take to run the district, right, so that's like your education, which is a 10, operation and maintenance is 20, transportation's a 40, you know, working cash is another 70, so these are what you would do to run a district, this is what ISB typically look like, look at, but the district has attempted, has worked and maneuvered its way with all of its resources to ensure that we do have a good education for all of our students, it's very admirable to see the different programming throughout the district, as well as trying to just keep building upkeep, so that's where we're at with this one, and then the non-operating funds, our bond and interest, that's fine, IMRF and social security, capital projects, there's nothing planned, a tort, which is some of like different legal pieces, health, life, safety, but it's pretty much balanced, non-operating, again, being you don't need it to operate your district, right, for your classrooms, so again, the recommendation, I finally feel like I can start sitting down and doing the programmatic review setup that we've discussed, that's been on the back of my mind, but there's always something great happening, so you're kind of running around and doing what you gotta do here, we're looking at our cost of our upkeeps of all buildings, for example, I do hear about people asking about the TIF dollars and Manning and what's being spent, rest assured, the money is being spent, I'm working on putting together a spreadsheet just to keep track of, here's how much we've received in funding from the TIF, versus how much we're actually spending from that money, so that people can start seeing that, so for example, the PA systems, the plumbing, there's a lot of everything that goes into what we've spent already, and I'm hoping I can create that, at least from this standpoint, from this year going forward, that people understand, we are using all of our resources, there's not always such a thing as free money, and the TIF is an example of, we are frozen in terms of what we can make in an EAV, because that's a part of the TIF was, so we, it is costing us in a regard, we're also going to keep utilizing our cash flow and review our working cash, I've mentioned transferring the approximate $600,000 into our capital projects fund, so we can keep things running, and those are both non-operating funds, so I apologize if I was way too fast, but I just figured this was just the review and questions, here we go.
Can you very briefly explain the programmatic review again, since that one is a little more unique to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the programmatic review is gonna consist of us looking at our FTEs, our salaries, our benefits, looking at purchase services in each program, supplies, the whole nine yards, from there, you can look at, how is this affecting students, so we look at each of our programming, for example, like extracurricular activities, we can break them down, how many kids are involved, how many staff members are involved in it as well, what is the percentage of students who go on to post-secondary, or what is their average GPA, or what is their average test scores, stuff like that to show and justify what the great things are that are happening here, it'll show some great things, it's a great way for staff members to look at how the data ties in with the finances, it doesn't happen too often like this, where districts are able to essentially, I mean, show off, right, and discuss, this is what our money's going towards and why, and there are gonna be some good conversations with it, it's about, again, tying in that finance and curricular piece, that doesn't always happen, so that people understand the rationale of these decisions that we're doing.
And is that something that is available to, becomes available to stakeholders, as you're able to like show that data per se?
That will be, I already talked to Dr. Braun about some of the data that we can tie in with it, Mr. Baldorman's gonna be there every step of the way too, we're going to, it's going to turn into a pretty much a, I don't know, some sort of, it's like a packet or a review from everything, there's no problem with that being shared, I think it's actually more of a showcase of how well we've done.
Do you then sometimes make recommendations based on the outcomes of the review, financial recommendations?
Absolutely, when I did this the first time, as a team, we've actually, I believe in I mentioned it last time, you can see your budget as it is now, then you can say, well, what if it's a 10% increase in that program, based on what it's doing, what would it look like then, if you have to cut back, like a 10%, hypothetically, what would that look like, so it kind of shows you kind of the, you know, future and what is valuable, what is needed, what needs more, more resources, or what looks like, you know what, we might be able to do without adding resources to that as well, that's the plan.
I think that's great, I'm really happy that we're doing this, and I think it's really important for everybody to know about, because I think it just shows that financial responsibility, and that we're looking at it with a fine tooth comb, really, and the efficacy of all of our programs, and everything changes so quickly in education, maybe the thing we needed, even just five years ago, as a result of COVID, isn't the best thing anymore, and there's something else, so I just appreciate that we're doing that.
It'll be great, and there's no place where you can go, in a district, where you can walk through the building, and I see it when I follow Mr. Baldorman around, there are kids, like he knows every single name, they love it.
And that's an exaggeration, I appreciate that, but, test me on that one.
Test them.
I love them all, but I don't know all their names.
But it's a matter of, when you see those relationships being built, when it comes to staffing, when it comes to the kids, what they're doing, what kind of ideas they're coming up with, different programmatic ideas, the high school wants to do, every child having one thing extracurricular to keep them involved, that doesn't just happen, so I'm hoping that this can help tie in and show, there's a real special place here that frankly, anybody would be lucky to have kids in.
I'm super looking forward to seeing it, I think it's a very natural next step, after the dig in on the data, the student data that we've been doing over the last couple of years, and the growth that we've gotten from that, it only makes sense that we dig into the financial data, I think it's a great next step, and I'm looking forward to seeing, to seeing it.
Absolutely.
So with the operating funds, that negative $273,000, do you think you'll be able to close that gap further, to try and balance the budget, or are we?
I can always tell you anything, you know, but the thing is, there's so much unknown from now until the end of the fiscal year, you know, I, one of the craziest things that ever happened in the previous district, a student moved in and he needed $100,000 in services.
Right.
When you are a smaller-
This happened to us.
It has.
So when you're a smaller district, you get affected pretty quick, and so that's one thing, I can never guarantee what I'm going and can and can't do, but I can guarantee it's always gonna be in the best interest of our kids, and I think that's where we're going with it, you know, within reason.
Right.
And I would say, to put that into perspective, normally Carlos does this, but I think he doesn't have his calculator out, that is-
I already did it.
Point zero zero seven, it's a seventh of a percentage of our total, right, 273,000 out of our $35 million budget, less than 1%, so.
It's a rounding error.
It is a rounding error, I need to add that to my notes.
But to answer your question, Kevin, I think this, we will be in slight deficit spending, and then when we do the program review, we can make some tough decisions and get back to a balanced budget, if that's what people think is the best way to go.
And we've always talked about that, and that's why I like this program, because we, many of us have asked, like, you know, we, and we ask our, you know, something we take back to our stakeholders, is, you know, when they're time to make tough decisions, you know, where do you cut, what do you, what's, what's at risk, and we can start to ask, answer with data, I think that's better than me saying how I feel I should know, like, we can answer that with concrete kind of information.
Hopefully there'll be some low hanging fruit, where we don't have to make really tough decisions, like, oh, we don't need that anymore.
But I think it's important that, you know, we've had listening sessions about our facilities, but as a, as we look overall, you know, we tell our kids, it doesn't grow on trees, like, you can be involved in this just as much, you know, as we are, we're gonna take what, you know, what our constituents think, but they, you know, we have something to present to them, to say, you know, you can, when you're giving us messages, or you're, you know, you have your input, use what information we have, and hopefully it's not too much of a tough decision, but we-
Well, just because we say the word financial, I don't want it to also be negative, I also want it to be, we can find some celebrations that we've really done a great job with.
Well, I think that's huge too, because so many people just aren't, aren't in our school buildings on a regular basis, or involved, but they're part of our community, so any window into what it's actually like is super helpful.
And I think that's, we've been doing that, but just what you said there, people ask, oh, what is that doing for you, or what, it's just great to be able to answer that more concretely, we've, we can already celebrate it without, you know, having that right now, but I think this, it just adds to what the great work we're already doing, and points to what we need to do also.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other additional comments or questions from members of the Board of Education?
No.
Cool, are there any public comments concerning the proposed 2025-2026 budget? Okay, I declare this public hearing on the proposed 2025-2026 budget closed. Moving on to our consent agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, personnel, Christian Rosa, volunteer wrestling coach, Westmont Junior High School, Stephen Micalle, volunteer scholastic bowl coach, Westmont High School, Carlos Rivero, volunteer soccer coach, Westmont High School, thank you to all these volunteers, resignations, number two, approval of the September 2025 expenditure report, ratification of the August 2025 regular payroll, presentation of the ISBE salary compensation report, presentation of the IMRF salary compensation report, presentation of the salary compensation report for all employees.
So moved.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Sekiri.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Cool, and just a reminder that those compensation reports are reports that we do every single year as standard operating procedures, there's nothing out of the ordinary there.
And they are posted publicly on the website.
And they are posted publicly on the website, we have no information or discussion, so we're gonna move right along into our action items for tonight, first one, adoption of the 2025-2026 budget, where I will entertain a motion, the Chair will entertain a motion, whereas the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201, County of DuPage, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget, and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to public inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon, and whereas a public hearing was held as to such of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the said district as follows, section one, that the fiscal year of the school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, section two, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of this school year for the said fiscal year. That's it?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Akiri.
Yes.
Ms. Mill.
Yes.
Dr. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Redonia.
Yes.
Ms. Conover.
Yes.
Mr. Avia.
Yes.
Mr. Marin.
Yes.
Ms. Akiri.
Yes.
Superintendent's report.
Overall, things are very positive in the district, it's homecoming week at the high school, Friday night is a nice community event, we'll have the band playing and the cheerleaders and the football team, and just a lot of fun, the parade is on Thursday starting around six, so the thing that I would ask, we're seeing great gains in literacy, which is so essential for any student, no matter where they're headed in life, and, but we need to be partners, so parents, please make sure your kids are reading at night at least 20 minutes, and that's really crucial, and it's, I think the partnership has led to some great gains in literacy, significant, incredible gains for students to become readers, and that's such an important thing, like I said, no matter where they're headed in life, so we all need to be on board, we need to be in partnership about that, same thing with getting kids to school, our chronic absenteeism rates are some of the best in the state, but we need to be partners, and we need kids in school every day they can be that's reasonable, and those are things that are good for our kids and good for our schools and our community, so I'm very proud of the admin team, the teachers, the staff, the kids have been incredible, we always have more work to do, but progress is being made.
Great, board reports. Cool, public comment. Okay, future meetings and events, we have our Westmont High School Homecoming Parade, September 25th at 6:00 PM in downtown Westmont, it is pretty quick, about 15 minutes, we just walked down the north part of Cass, join us, there will be candy. Westmont High School's Homecoming Football Game is September 26th, this Friday at 6:00 PM at the high school, October 8th is a SIP day, half day dismissal, half day, yeah, parent teacher conferences, October 9th, I believe that those signups started today, we all got our text messages, there is no student attendance on October 9th, October 10th, and October 13th, that is a five and a half day fall long weekend, and our next board meeting is October 14th, 6:30 PM, right here, wait, are we here?
Yeah.
Yeah, right here, Village Hall, we do have a committee meeting before it, and that's where actions happen.
There is no committee meeting on the 14th?
No? Okay, never mind.
Every small appearance, no, conferences have gone to one day.
Conferences are down to one day, check your-
Thursday.
Thursday.
But they start earlier in the afternoon and go till the evening.
Cool, rock on. Check your messages and schedule your conferences, if there's nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the September 23rd, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ooh, approved.